We are convened with our school board meeting for September 27th. Thank you so much. We have some wonderful presentations tonight, so I would entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Motion by John, second by Diana, to approve the agenda. All in favor say aye. There is no one signed up to speak from the audience? I think we're packed with people that are going to be speaking on the agenda. Staff reports. Welcome, David Marquardt. As per your request at governance this morning, we chatted about, is there something specific we would like the FEA representative to report out? And I think that our consensus was this is your placeholder, whatever you'd like to report of your activities, but you know, it would be perfectly fine if you wanted to start with a little, over the course of however many meetings, some FEA 101. You know, how you're structured and how many members and just some real basics to familiarize us with your membership and your organization a little more. So if that's something that you'd like to do, otherwise it's just whatever your activities you'd like to fill us in on.
All right. Thank you for that information.
Sure.
We'll certainly do that.
Thank you.
I do have a few things. Most of the report tonight is kind of geared towards North Dakota United. So if you're not familiar with who they are, FEA is the local association and the North Dakota United is our state affiliate. So coming out just recently, we are looking for a vote yes on measure two. That measure is to get funding for K-12. It's to open up the Foundation AIDS Stabilization Fund without the governor allocating that. The money can't be touched. And so we're hoping this will pass to get funds for K-12 education, to ensure that the funding's there next biennium. And so we're looking to get a yes vote on that. Also, North Dakota United, since the organization is no longer doing the instructional conference in October, we have joined in with DPI and we're help sponsoring the Title I Conference, which is in about two weeks in the middle of October, a week before our original, like the days off that we currently have. So we're looking towards that and the offerings that they'll be giving the staff and educators throughout North Dakota. North Dakota United also started last year Teach Forward. It's a new program for teachers who are really in their first 10 years of teaching. It's kind of like a mentoring program, kind of through North Dakota United and the local associations. What we're looking to do there is really guide some leadership at the early on in their career, support them, hoping to keep them in the profession. And any kind of guidance we can give them is what we're trying to do there. And last year, Grant Forks saw three of their Teach Forward teachers become part of the executive board of their local this year. So that's kind of our goal too, to get them in leadership roles through the association as well as supporting them in the classroom and what their job is in the district. And the last thing is, we just finished up our fall membership drive. Membership is ongoing throughout the year, obviously, but it's always a big push in the fall. So we're looking to get the final numbers in this week and we'll give a report on that next time. So that's all I have.
Great. Thank you very much. Anybody have any questions for Dave? Terrific. Thank you. Appreciate it. Kathy Anderson and a report on Trollwood.
Oh, wasn't very strong blue. But it was blue. All right. I put together a presentation here tonight just to kind of give you some background of Trollwood as well as update you on our year, this year. So 2016 represents Trollwood's 38th anniversary. For 38 years, thousands of young people have spent their summers learning, growing, and making friends at Trollwood. In the fall of 2012, as part of our business plan, we identified three organizational priorities for Trollwood and Blue Stem, which have remained the foundation for which we have been building, from which we have been building. These priorities include providing high-quality arts education, presenting high-quality entertainment, and serving as a community event center. Today, we offer 12 youth arts programs for students from ages six through graduated seniors. Trollwood enrollment in 2016 included 1,123 students and 1,773 learning opportunities, operating our programs at a 95% capacity. Many of our students participate in more than one program, so individually, we serve 652 students this year. This year, all totaled, our students received 76,400 hours of arts instruction. Our student body is made up of students from throughout the Fargo-Moorhead area and beyond. Forty percent of our students are current Fargo Public School students. The second-largest population of Trollwood students comes from West Fargo, making up 30% of our student body. Eleven percent of those students come from Moorhead Public Schools. With the vast majority of our students coming from the Fargo-Moorhead, West Fargo communities, we do have students joining us from as far away as Connecticut, Florida, and even a student from Norway who chose to come to Moorhead for the summer, just to spend her summer at Trollwood Performing Arts School. In 2016, we offered four full-performance opportunities for elementary, middle school, and high school students. These included our Trollwood Children's Theater for elementary students, presenting Annie Kids in the earlier part of the year, Totally Trollwood Musical for our middle school students, producing The Music Man Junior in July and August, the Actors Collaborative Theater, which we call LAB, a non-musical performance opportunity. We presented Shakespeare's A Midsummer Night's Dream in June and July. This was a brand-new program this year and it was a collaboration with FMCT and worked out really well. And of course, our main stage musical program in 2016, we brought to life the underwater world of Disney's The Little Mermaid. 131 young people were involved in the creation of Disney's The Little Mermaid. This was the largest-attended show in the history of Trollwood Performing Arts School, averaging over 2,300 people per night in just 12 individual performances. So all totaled, 27,711 audience members joined us for this summer's production. In addition, we broke the single-night attendance for a Trollwood show with 3,065 audience members attending on Thursday, July 28th of 2016. In addition, Trollwood offers a full array of performing and production arts classes, workshops, and leadership opportunities for students of all ages. This includes 59 classes at all levels of performing and production arts, including technical theater for both the middle school and high school ages through our Trollwood Academy and our Totally Trollwood Academy programs. Our Trollwood Conservatory provides arts-intensive opportunities in film, dance, acting, and musical theater for our upper-level students. And our Student Leadership Program provides students the opportunity to be assigned a position to work side-by-side a professional artist in the students' field of interest. Participants are assigned a mentor and receive hands-on learning in areas like stage management and directing, lighting design, sound design, costuming, scenic design, to name a few. For our elementary school students, we offer 12 week-long sessions of Art Spark, where students learn basic skills in singing and acting and dance, ending the week with a performance to show off their new and improved skills to their parents and their grandparents, their aunts and uncles, and their friends. Through Spark Music, elementary students participate in workshops throughout the year to encourage a love and understanding of music, which also serves as a tool to build confidence and creativity within its young participants. A program that integrates through all of our programs is called our STAR Program, which stands for Students at Risk. No child is ever turned away at Trollwood, from a program at Trollwood, for their inability to pay, which is something our STAR Program makes possible. It also brings mentors to students. It provides meals, transportation, and instructional supplies for those students in need. This is a national award-winning program that began in 1997 and continues today as the result of the generosity of our donors. Another aspect of what we manage at Trollwood is overseeing all things that happen at the beautiful venue of Blue Stem Center for the Arts. In addition to the venue of Blue Stem Center for the Arts being utilized for school arts curriculum and activities, we are also proud to host public performances by other arts groups, exhibitions, community festivals, corporate retreats, conferences, and other private rental opportunities. In 2016, we've continued our tradition of joining together with other partners in the community to bring high-quality entertainment options to the stage at Blue Stem. In 2016, we've teamed up with Jade Presents for the eighth year running. We've enjoyed another amazing summer concert series featuring nationally-renowned recording artists from numerous genres of music. All totaled, Blue Stem will have hosted 16 concerts by mid-October, and one of those concerts is happening right now, as we speak, with Blues Traveler and G-Love and Special Sauce out at Blue Stem tonight. We also, one of my favorite events of the whole summer, hosted the 6th Annual Symphony Rocks at Blue Stem this summer once again. Thank you, Linda, for that. I told Linda I take full credit for all of the wonderful comments that happened as a result of the symphony. It's a great partnership. Trollwood employs over 100 staff members on a seasonal basis, with 62% of our employees in 2016 hired from our local community. As an educational institution, we train students in the arts, and there's nothing quite as gratifying as hiring those students that we train to come back and be part of our staff. In 2016, 32% of our workforce were alumni of our programs. Currently, Trollwood employs six year-round staff members, and two of them are also young alums, who have chosen to stay local and continue making Trollwood strong and healthy for future generations. Thank you for believing in the arts and for supporting the work that we do at Trollwood. As we continue to work together, we will be able to create awesome experiences for our area youth and quality entertainment and cultural experiences for the entire region to enjoy. I so appreciate the support of the school board and I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Great. Thank you very much, Kathy. Any questions or comments? John?
So the relationship with Jade Presents is effective, and how do these national artists, what kind of feedback do we get from them about the venue?
They actually love the venue. We created a new aspect of the venue this summer, working closely with Jade. He's contributed some pieces of it. We've worked on some pieces of it, but we've created this artist village. And that actually is kind of a key thing for these artists to have such an awesome experience when they come to Moorhead, because before that, we had the understage, which I don't know if you've been in the understage, but it's not that fancy. And these people are getting off their million-dollar buses as they come in. So they have had great response from the artists for this artist village that they've created, and many of the artists, if not all of them, actually make comments onstage of what a beautiful venue it is and how excited they are to be in Moorhead and performing at Blue Stem, so.
Anyone else? Rebecca?
So other than Little Mermaid being really popular, why did it go over so well, do you think, comparison to some of the others? Was that other marketing? Was it just, you know, that that's what you were putting on?
Yeah.
Some of the unique?
Well, I think there's several factors that go into that. And first of all, the name recognition of a show does seem to make a difference to people. I also believe that we are really, we had to kind of rebuild our audiences, I think, when we moved over to the new site, and we are seeing that increase each year. Now, if we were to do a show that didn't have that audience recognition, our numbers will go down, I guarantee you that. But the combination of it being a family-friendly show, something that everyone can come to and enjoy, and you know, I have to believe the heart and soul that our kids put into it is a pretty alluring thing to people, and that's always, I think, the most important part of it.
Anyone else? Yep, John?
One more. Ninety-five percent participation is amazing. Is that a good problem? Are we hitting limits somehow? Is that putting restrictions on the growth of the program or restrictions on how many kids can attend? Or is it just, we had that much and we can grow and we can handle it? Or how is that affecting the program?
Well, we have had, we've actually had higher percentages even in the past. We're really trying to balance it out, because we want these kids to come and have an awesome experience. So we want our class sizes to match that awesome experience. So you know, there are some programs that we'll cap out, like our Totally Trollwood Musical, for example. It's a show, you know, it's a cast, you can only have so many roles. So we capped that at about 60. We did have 64, so we went a little bit over the cap, but we were able to make that work. We've been kind of playing with these numbers, trying to build capacity in our programming. We've created new programs, like the LAB program is a new program, we had 19 students in it. So that kind of built capacity, built more opportunity for students. So each year, we look at our programs and we try to figure out how we can gain the most capacity so that we can have more students participate and make sure that it's balanced off with a great experience. And I feel like we're kind of finding that now, because we've had some really, really high numbers, but our numbers are really solid, so.
Kathy? Oh, David?
As attendance grows, parking becomes more and more of a dilemma, doesn't it?
It does, yes.
Has there been, you know, when they have events at the Fargo Dome, they do shuttles and whatnot. Has there been discussion about doing something like that? Because you get, what was it, 3,000 people at that one performance?
Yeah.
I don't know where you, I wasn't there that night. I don't know where you put all those people, all those cars.
We have a lot of parking possibilities as long as it is dry. You know, a lot of our parking, the majority of our parking is on grass. So my biggest nightmare is when I wake up and it stormed overnight and we had two inches of rain and we have no parking lots. So that is going to be an ongoing thing until we can determine how to come up, you know, maybe working with the city and trying to come up with a solution to that. So we have more paved parking. That's important. We dealt with that even at the symphony concert. We were a little afraid of the water in the parking lots. This summer, because of that issue, it pushed us into shuttling, and we had mixed reviews of the shuttling. We work with our partners. Hornbacher's is an amazing partner to Trollwood, has been for many, many years. And Matt let us use their parking lot at Azul, which was fantastic, and that kind of helps balance it off. But you know, we had some people like, "Oh, you should do that shuttling all the time." And some people were like, "I hated the shuttling. Why did you do that?" So trying to find that happy medium, it does, you know, cost us more, you know, it's add an expense to bring those buses in. But that did seem to work for us this year when we didn't have parking lots.
Kathy, I have a couple of quick questions for you. Do you have a new logo?
We are, I'm testing it out. What do you think?
Cool. Just had to ask.
That was good. You are observant.
Well, that's kind of my thing. So the Spark Music that happens throughout the year, what is that? I was not familiar with that one.
Oh, yes. We are working with Paige Rizak, and Paige is an amazing musician, piano player, and she's been doing some things on her own for the past few years, and we combined together and I just asked her if she would be interested in working with us. So she has themed workshops that she brings in, and usually they're like maybe three or four hours on this day, like school-off days. So we kind of sprinkle them throughout the year, when it works into her schedule, when it works into the school schedules. So that's something, we're actually just looking at the calendar right now to put something on yet for this fall. But she has, they're themed, like The Minions, was making music with the minions, so, but she does just an amazing job with the kids, so.
Great. Thank you. Well, thank you so much. If no one else has any questions, we just really appreciate, this is one of our favorite reports every year, because it's always such great news. And that long list of performances, what a difference from that first year. So I think Dr. Schatz, you had something to add?
Well, I'd be remiss if I didn't mention the fact that Kathy and I now have been together for four years in this partnership to rebuild Trollwood from when I came on. And I can tell you that from where that was to where we are today is night and day. And she has just done a terrific job, so people need to know that, that I don't know anybody that works harder than Kathy. And with all the different things that you're juggling out there and does it in such a positive way, with such a positive spirit, it's amazing. And so we could have three inches of rain, no parking lots, and she's calling me up on the phone and she's all fired up about shuttling. I mean, I don't know how that works, but so anyways, kudos to you and your team and all the work that you've done. This thing is as good as it's ever been, and it's because of you and your team, so thank you.
Thank you so much. So appreciate all of your support. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Kathy. Clap for that one. Show business. I just have to clap for show business. Okay, so are you introducing? Okay?
Tonight, we have several people here, and Todd Olson, our athletic director. I asked Todd if he would have his, all of the people that he works with show up, and so they've split up this report, I think, amongst many of them. As a good leader that Todd is, he's delegating tonight. And so anyways, they have a new, kind of a new report for you with, I think, a much more comprehensive look at all of the things that we do that are outside of that academic classroom. And then along with that, Denise is here too, so we're going to hear about fine arts. So I'm going to turn it over to Todd, and he can do introductions and do the report. So thank you for being here, everybody.
All right. Thank you. Yes, I'm excited to be here to talk a little bit about our Student Activities Program. We're going to try and not make this look like a relay race, but it might look a little bit like that. We're each going to take a set of slides as we go through the presentation. And what I'm going to do is have them introduce themselves as they come up here. Just a little preview, here's who all's here. Denise is our Performing Arts Specialist. She has been here a number of times. And then we have our three high school building activity coordinators and our three middle school building activity coordinators. As I said, they will have a little introduction for you when they come up. What we're going to talk about tonight is, as part of the strategic plan, we have initiative four is engagement and experiences in co-curricular activities. And we took this very seriously, that if co-curricular activities are going to be part of the strategic plan, we need to develop some things that we can answer to our goals. So during the last year, you know, goal number one is diverse activities. I think you can see by that report, we've always done on participation numbers, that we offer a lot of things for kids to do. There are a ton of opportunities for them to engage in co-curricular activities. Goal number two, high-quality activities. Well, how do we measure that? So we decided, we put together a survey and go to our consumers, the kids, and ask them, "How are we doing in these things that, you know, those of us who promote activities say that we do this, 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 and this? Let's get some evidence to prove it." And then goal number three, I'll talk about a little at the end, enhanced learning and what we see with GPAs and team scholar awards and some of those measurables that fit into that area. As I said, we're going to spend some time on our participant satisfaction survey, and I think we're all kind of proud of this. This was a team effort. This was, we developed this survey together. Our people in the buildings took the time to get kids to take the survey, and we ended up with 3,237 responses, which I've been a part of some school improvement surveys that have done nowhere near that percent. So we're pretty proud of that. As I said, we took some time in May, each building dedicated some time to advertising to kids. In the middle schools, I think the structure of the advisor times made it a little easier to get kids to take it, but we sent a link out to their school email accounts and had 3,200-plus kids that took the time to take the survey. So I felt pretty good about that. You never know when you do that, what the response is going to look like. I'm going to set up a little bit of the demographic information, and then I'll turn it over to our building activity coordinators. They'll take you through the survey results. So our first question, we asked them, "Were you in activities? If they were, they went on in the survey. If they weren't, they were exited." And as you can see here, about 82% were. Gender breakdown, 55% female. I was very happy to see this. I didn't know how the grades would break out, and they broke out pretty well. You never know if that senior's going to take the time to take that survey. The schools also broke out nicely. It tells you that there was an effort at the building level to get kids to take this. Now, the last thing here is, we asked them, "Describe the majority of your participation." They could choose one of those four things, athletics, performing arts, clubs, or academic activities. The club and academic activities slices of the pie up there were so small, we grouped them together. So for each of our questions, you'll now see three groups. There'll be an athletics response, a performing arts response, and a academic activities/clubs response going forward. And I will turn it over to Mr. Beaton.
Good evening. I'm Mike Beaton. I'm the Assistant, or Activities Coordinator and Assistant Principal at South High School. I've been there for about three years and been in the district for about 20 years. I was an Assistant Principal at Discovery Middle School and also taught math at Ben Franklin prior to that. So I can also say that I'm a proud graduate of Fargo Public Schools and Fargo South High, actually, as well, so. The first question that we asked the students was about the reason for their participation in the activities. And it's broken down into three different categories. The first one here is the athletic activity respondents. And so you can kind of see what this group of students, or why they chose to participate in their activities, with the top three being it's fun to improve skills and then the competition. Next group here is our performing arts respondents. And I think in the packet of information that Todd provided, it lists our different activities. I can say at the high school level, we have 24 varsity sports that we offer. Performing arts would include your drama productions, our musical, our three-act play, the one-act competitions, as well as like our pep band and show choirs and things like that. And so the reason for the kids participating in these activities, it's fun, improve their skills, the top two, as you can see there. The last group here is our academic activities and clubs. That would be like our forensics, debate, speech, student congress. We also have like academic competitions, as well as our like French club, Spanish club, and so forth. So we offer over, I know at South, we offer over 30 clubs and opportunities for kids. And here you can see a little bit of variation from the first two answers. It's fun, improve our skills, but you'll see the third one there is to be with my friends. So it's a little bit different, obviously, than the previous. The next question was about how they felt and connected with and cared for in their participation. And you'll notice kind of a common theme as we go through these three groups again. All of them were at about 94%, either agree or strongly agree that they were connected and cared about during their participation in these activities. This again is our sports groups. Performing arts groups, again, about 94%. Finally, our academic and our club activities, again, about 94% of our kids felt they were cared about and connected to their, in their activity. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Travis Christensen. Like Mike, similar role, Assistant Principal and Activities Coordinator at North High School, going on five years there in that role. Taught at North for a handful of years prior to that in the Social Studies Department, and also did some coaching in a variety of different sports. So my slides are going to focus on kind of the questions about, what did you get out of it? Or what are some things that you got out of it? And one of the things that we asked our kids was specifically about development of character. And what was really interesting as you look through this, and again, it'll be athletic activity respondents first, followed by our fine arts, and then our club and academic group, is that I don't think any group is lower than, if you put the strongly agree and agree, at lower than 94%. And so I really think that says a lot about the leadership that our coaches, our advisors, our directors are giving to these kids. And as you look at the athletic group there, but as we scroll through then to the performing arts, again, you know, very strong, and I'm going to click to the academic and club, and you see very similar pieces. And I think what's encouraging about that to me, and I know we've talked about this, is I think that really shows that one of our pushes with our group leaders has been, you know, that old adage about activities, you know, really being the building blocks of character. That doesn't happen unless there's a purposeful leader making sure that those things are becoming ingrained. And so I give kudos to our coaches, our advisors, and our directors for making sure that they're focusing on more than just, you know, whether it's the football skills or the art skills or the skill in a given instrument, they're talking about how you can take what you're learning here and take it on in life. So that was very encouraging for us to see in that area. The second question that I'll kind of talk to you a little bit about this evening is kind of going deeper into that, about specifically about citizenship, sportsmanship, and respect. And I think we look at those three pieces. I mean, if you think about what we want our students to know and be able to do by the time they leave us in graduation, having those three capacities has got to be pretty high up on the list. And again, as you look through the slides, whether it be our athletic respondents here at at again, about ninety-four, ninety-five percent, very similar numbers in our performing arts about agree or strongly disagree. And then again, academic and club activity respondents having again, similar respondents. I think that's very, that's something that as a, as an activity department, but also as a district-wide group, we can feel very good about, that our kids feel that they're getting a development, not in only their given activity of choice, but also developing these things that they can take with them and apply it wherever their life might lead beyond high school graduation. So, with that, I'll turn it over to Mr. O'Houser.
Hello, everyone. My name is Lenny O'Houser, I, I've been here in Fargo FPS since ninety-seven, started out in Agassi, saw a lot of things happen to that building through its course of some reconstruction there. Went over to South Campus too, again, that's where I saw a lot of the remodeling going on. And then been at Davies since they've opened up as the activities coordinator, so. I'm gonna talk to you about some things with inside the program here tonight. First one is about the safety portion of how our students feel about the activities that they're involved with, do they feel safe in there? And just as Travis had said, we're, we're strong ninety-plus percent that feel they agree or strongly agree that our activities that we have across the board, they feel pretty safe in. When I went back and I looked at the comments to strongly disagree or disagree, mostly it's because of the nature of the sport. They just felt that they're in football, there's some, always some safety issues there. So it really reflects back to, I think the students just thought, the nature of the sport is why they probably knocked it down a little bit. But I credit to, you know, our program that we, our athletic trainers that we have instilled in our buildings, to where the students do feel safe in that fact, that if they do have an injury, they've got a nice protocol, somebody to lean back on, as well as our coaching staff being certified in the areas of CPR, AED, to meet that coaching permit requirements. They have some background in first aid. So I, I believe that through the course of our availability of the athletic trainers, as well as our coaches being educated in many areas, students feel that they are, they're well taken care of. The next one is in performing arts, same thing, there's not much difference in the, in the percentages there. The academic and in our club activities, nobody disagrees with that, they all just feel that they're very comfortably handled within the program. The next one is the communication piece that happens within the programs, and the question is, is the coach communicated with me in a positive manner? I know this is one thing that we always talk in our pre-conferences with our coaches about communication, handling, communication across the board with athletes, parents, community, and so forth. And we, we, we tried to, I know I do anyway, I tried to really talk to them about finding that balance of what is too much and what is not enough communication. And we always lean towards go to the too much. And I think that's a reflection here. We, we really have very little students that strongly disagree or disagree with the positive communications within our programs. Again, when I went back and I looked at the comments, a couple of them that stood out to me that I use with our coaches in our pre-conference, again, talking about how can we correct some of this, is just, you know, the playing time. And if students, if they're not getting the playing time, just being communicated, you know, what, what do they need to do, you know, to possibly get more playing time or to be making the team? And so those are just the negative comments that made that list. And so again, I, I feel our coaches, through our education, our PD, and through our conferences that we continuously have with them, both in pre-conference and post-conferences, that we use the data, the surveys, our yearly surveys that we give, our programs will sometimes indicate that communication is, is, is a issue within a program. We'll use that and talk to the coaches, advisors, and during the postseason, around our postseason. That and mine, who's next? Oak, Oak is next, thank you.
I'm Oak Riley, I've been with the district for twenty-one years. Been fortunate to be at the same building for those twenty-one years at Ben Franklin Middle School, and have had a great time there working with our kids and staff. And with our next slides here, the advisor and/or coach communicated with me in a positive manner. What, what was just going over with Lenny here, the next three are, the coach was knowledgeable about the co-curricular activity. What's nice within our district is with our mentorship program, not only for our teachers, but also for our coaches, to be able to, you know, through the coaches council, get our younger coaches working with that veteran coach. As well as, you know, with the gentlemen that have already been up here, they do a tremendous job at the high school level, having those coaches communicate with us at the middle school to see what are the needs there? You know, as well as then what are we teaching at the middle school level with the fundamentals of the game, or whether it be even in music, you know, the fine arts going on that stage, you know, what are the different things that, that those advisors are doing and sharing those across the board? And Denise does a great job with her staff, when I say her staff, with the fine arts. Even in our building, you know, again, talking to coaches as well as the directors, in all three of these slides, we're at a ninety-seven to ninety, high ninety-six percentile of strongly agree and agree, where the students are feeling comfortable with that, that our coaches and advisors and club people know what they're doing. So that's, that's great to see.
Dean, Dan Schultz, Discovery Middle School. This is my first year, so I am a newbie. I spent fourteen years at North High as a physical education teacher and coached multiple sports. So the slides that I have for you, and being a former coach, sitting back looking at it makes you pretty proud to know that participation in athletic activities have improved my ability to work with people and to become a better teammate. So knowing that the students that are coming through our programs, when they leave, that's what they're feeling. And the same thing when performing arts, when they leave, they're feeling like they're working with other people and pretty much at their highest level. And if you look at our academic and club activities, the same thing, you're looking at ninety-four percent roughly in all three areas, so.
My name's Dean Wilson, and I'm at Carbon Assa Middle School. Like Todd also said, I'm the end of the really, I'm the anchor, always wanted to be the anchor, so. Anyways, I started in nineteen ninety, I was the head hockey coach at Fargo South for eighteen years, so I've had some good experience at the high school level, and also have history with Dr. Schatz and Todd Olson from Grand Forks, and, and when they moved to Fargo, I was, I was hoping I treated them well, 'cause now they're my bosses, so I go, I think I was good to you guys in the hockey world, so. I'm a better student because of my participation in student activities, and if you see here, you see strongly agreed and agreed is a big percent, you know, eighty-eight point two, but what I look at with, with our activities now is we do such a great job of teaching soft skills, you know, I think of even twenty-first century skills of different things like that. Last year, I have to mention that we did a book study, inside-outside coaching, and our coaches just craved it, and it was a, it was a big part of our, our program where students enjoyed it, but I'm a better because of my participation in student activities. We're teaching a lot of lifetime skills besides, of, but winning and losing, so it's exciting to see that they recognize that too. I'm a better person, a student because of my participation in the school, I, you know, it's proven fact that kids that are busy, they're disciplined, they, they do a nice job, and, and they know that school's important and it all ties into extracurricular activities. I'm a better student because of participating in student activities again. Once again, it shows up there, strongly agreed, and agreed again, very high percents. Like I said, a lot of these percents that we presented tonight are, show, they're overwhelming, I think, you know, when you think about how well our students have done and, and what they feel, and when you get three thousand plus students doing a survey and taking it seriously, that's, it's nice to see that, so. Thank you.
Well, they save the oldest for last, and I've been in Fargo Public School since I was in fifth grade, so. Graduated with Dr. Schatz from North High. This is my thirty-first year of teaching in Fargo, I've taught thirty-seven years altogether, so. One of these days, I'm gonna probably wake up and say I should retire, but I enjoy every single day I work, so that's a great thing. So I take care of the performing arts committee part of this, and that involves music and theater. And to start with theater, the middle school theater program for co-curricular has a one-act play and a musical each year at each middle school. The high school theaters do a three-act and a musical, and then they also have some extra things such as listed on the right side, improv, cabaret night, blacklight theater, they're very, very much different what those extra things are at each of the high schools, and then they participate in a one-act festival, which is a learning experience for the kids, where they get feedback on how they're doing with their acting, and it's not a competition, so it's much more educational for them. In the music co-curricular end of things, elementary kids are either in hand chimes or, and/or choir, and then some of the other types of things for elementary, world drumming occurs at Ed Clapp, we have folk music at Centennial, and we have musical theater at Bennett, so there's some teachers that have done some interesting things for their co-curricular activities. Middle school, besides the classroom band orchestra choir, we have honor choir, chamber orchestra, jazz band ensembles, and then on the right side, high school has basically those same things, and then we've also added composition, we've had composition since I was in high school, only that was after school before, now it's been moved into the day. We have guitar starting at Woodrow Wilson this year, and we also have drum line pep band that you see out in public. I'm the executive director of the Learning Bank, and this is an opportunity for each of the, the first grade through sixth grade students to participate in one performing, performance each year that gives them an enrichment opportunity besides what's offered in the school. So here's a list of things that kids can participate in. And then through sixth grade. As you see on the right side, this is a gentleman from the Ukraine that actually does a cultural experience with the students. They go into the middle schools after they do this performance, and then the kids learn to play spoons, so that's kinda fun, it's a cultural activity in the Ukraine. We were asked by the Metropolitan Opera about, I think, five years ago, to participate in their education program, so they give us fifty tickets to four live in HD showings at Century Ten Theater, which is great because they get to see up close and personal and behind-the-scenes things during the opera as it's shown that day. We're starting to see a lot of kids participate in national things, we have a national honors ensembles, band orchestra choir, jazz band, we have some kids in the Macy's Day Parade every year, we've got kids now participating in Carnegie Hall Performance Series. And then this is our thirteenth year being awarded Best Communities for Music Education in America, and it hasn't been thirteen consecutive, 'cause I think some of those years, the person before me may have not gotten the application done. So this, this asks all sorts of things like classroom length of time, frequency, the budget, how other community things, the kids can participate in questions like that on it. And then I'm going to turn this over back to Todd, I believe, so thank you for allowing us to come tonight, we've appreciated this.
Denise didn't mention this, but Denise happens to be the president of the National Association of Music Educators. That's over a hundred thousand member organization, and she's in charge, that's pretty impressive, pretty impressive. A couple of the other indicators, going back to our strategic plan goals, here's one, and this is just high school grades is the only place we have GPAs, but we're able to flag kids because of, the kids that are in co-curricular activities have to either attend a co-curricular meeting or take the online meeting, and that gets flagged in our school today and then into Power School. So we're able to look at, okay, what's the overall GPA of our students? What's the overall GPA of kids who do participate in our activities and then those that don't? And you see that the kids that participate are a little bit higher. Nationally, you see that quoted all the time, so it was interesting to see it here. This is our new one, and this is kind of a work in progress, but this is something that I did back in Grand Forks, is I kept an honor roll, and then when I gave my annual presentation to the board, I'd have this long list of, here's all the great things that our kids did this year. So we had each building try that this year, and then they submitted them to Jenny in my office, and we got a pretty impressive list. I think we're gonna try and standardize how we present that in the future. Jenny was very busy gathering the information, but it was good stuff. Lastly, I don't know how many of you are familiar with the team scholar awards, these are awards put on by the North Dakota High School Activities Association for the activities that they sanction, and those are both your performing arts activities and your athletic activities, and you submit to them the GPA of all your participants in any individual activity, and if it's a three-point-two or higher, you get that recognition as being a team scholar. We had sixty-one of those, that's pretty impressive. It is, we had some sports where all three of our boys' teams and girls' teams at all three high schools were three-point-two or better. That's pretty good stuff. Then Dr. Schatz asked me to include some information about co-ops. If you look, I think it's the last two pages of your report, the second to the last page just talks about who we're co-op with in various activities, and then the final page actually breaks down the number of participants from each of our co-op schools. I think a little note at this point on co-ops, we currently are in a cross-country co-op with Kindred, and we are going to dissolve that one this fall after the conclusion of the cross-country season. They're in a position where they wanna start their own program, and we have them driving from Kindred all the way up to North because of some history from twenty years ago between Coach Mayu and the Kindred folks, but they're gonna go ahead and start their own program starting next fall. Any questions for me?
Dr. Schatz, did you have something? Okay, anybody have any questions? David?
Thanks, guys. I was in the classroom for thirty-eight years, so I hope none of you are looking at getting out soon, because we really appreciate all you're doing for us. Todd, last time you were here, I kinda put you on the spot, and I asked you what Fargo was doing to eliminate traumatic brain injuries, knowing that that's not possible. But, did you happen to catch on the sports the other night, Mayville State is working with Riddell, to, they're working with a new helmet that apparently monitors hits? I think there are a couple of other high schools that are also using them or trying them out. Have you examined those, do you, can you tell us anything about their?
I, I've seen the technology, and what it really is at this point is just a reporting piece. It doesn't offer anything in the way of protection. I think, you know, there are a number of different sensors being built into helmets now that you can, after the fact, learn about what types of injuries an athlete might have sustained. I did see the Mayville State piece, I'm a proud alum, so I got it in a newsletter, but there, there are different, and a lot of that is being driven by the helmet companies, where if you're exclusively a riddle company, they may offer that to some of their schools. I'm not sure about how it started at Mayville.
I think the price was about five hundred dollars a helmet, wasn't it?
I believe that was right, which is, right now, we're in the three hundred dollar range, guys? Expensive, football helmets are expensive.
Anyone else have any questions? John?
I see that the percentage participating is down about ten percent since twenty-twelve, thirteen. It looks like kind of a trend. Can you speak to that? Is it, are there causes, are there, is it a trend? What's, what's going on with that?
I, I think you see the last two years have been down a little bit, and a good share of that was, we had to go back when we rewrote our club policies, where there were some things that we could no longer offer when we had to define what a curricular club was and what a non-curricular club was. So that was part of it. I think there was also, because of in the last strategic plan, there was a, a goal of getting ninety percent participation, we had a lot of things that were created to add a number, rather than pro- rather than probably part of an activity program. One that comes to mind is Homework Club. So anybody who went and did homework after school was put into Homework Club. And then that number could be counted towards your 90%. Now, we visited earlier. I use the example of, at our middle schools particularly, we could have a seventh-grade boy who plays football, plays hockey, and plays baseball, and he wouldn't count as a participant for the Fargo Public Schools. Because football is FM Athletics. Hockey is Fargo Youth Hockey. Baseball might be a club or Babe Ruth or whatever they chose to participate in. So we have a very busy young person who wouldn't count as a participant in our schools because of our offerings.
Can I follow up on that? So do we have any idea of the numbers of our students that are participating in outside clubs, any way to know that, or any self-reporting surveys or anything?
You know, I get real good data from Fargo Youth Hockey on what the future looks like. We don't really have that in FM Athletics or Babe Ruth Baseball. It's not something that we've ever tracked. The hockey numbers we track because we have a self-interest in trying to project out where we're gonna be at in terms of our hockey teams.
Thank you. Rebecca?
It's just very, very good information here. And I would like, I don't know how we do this, but I think we should kind of toot our own horn here a little bit because we talk a lot about how beneficial it is to participate in co-curricular activities. And I know I've heard that as I've served on the board and even before, and I thought, well, says who, you know? So this is really great information to have. And I just think it's, it's something that we, it's something more that we, we should keep sharing this information. And maybe it is on the public information or on our new website. I don't know. But as we talk about throughout the year, you know, little bits of information that we can share, things that we're proud about in regard to our schools, these are some really easy pieces of information that we can choose to share if we want to. And so it's very exciting. It's very positive. And I also wanted to say thanks for paying attention to the small parts of the percentages where people say they disagree, you know, and asking why. And is it because of communication? Or, you know, a visit with a coach or a teacher or something? And how to solve that? Because I think when it looks so great like this, then sometimes it's easy to just go, oh, well, the other numbers are so small that we shouldn't, we don't really need to look at it. But it's important to do so and see where we can improve. So thank you.
Every response was given an opportunity to add a comment. So that document is thick, you know? And a lot of good things. You, you wonder what kind of response are you gonna get when you offer that opportunity? And to see things like, Mrs. So-and-so changed my life. Coach So-and-so is a great leader. And, you know, probably 90%, 80, 90% of the responses were that type of response. So it's pretty neat stuff. I, we didn't know what to expect when we put this out there. And to see 90% come across in all those different areas, we were pretty thrilled when we first saw the data.
That's great. Anyone else anything? Yes, John?
We have a lot of activities, and that's great. Are there any activities that we're, we don't have in here that maybe we've looked at adding, that are coming up, that are becoming new activities that we should keep our eyes on? Is this list changing at all, or is it a very static list?
You know, I had a lot, one of the questions I asked is, one of the things you do as part of a self-audit for Title IX is you ask people, what, what aren't we offering that you might be interested in? The two that really stood out in the responses were soccer, which tells me those are middle school responses because we have high school soccer, but we don't have middle school soccer. The second one was lacrosse, which we see as an emerging sport, particularly over in Minnesota. So it wasn't anything really surprising. Those are things that had kind of been on our radar.
I do have one question. Back to the numbers, how you had mentioned in the old strategic plan, our goal was 90% and then explained why, you know, we're at 68. What, do we know what nationally, what other districts? Like you mentioned Minnesota, I mean, is there really a goal nationally for?
I have never seen a national standard. I would suggest that getting close to 70% is pretty high with limited offerings. You know, I think we have to acknowledge the fact that our kids are doing a lot of things that we don't offer. Think of figure skating, taekwondo, any of the martial arts that, you know, they're still busy kids, but it's not our program, so they don't count for us.
I have a question about which kids were counted in the survey? Because when you talked about the co-curricular, performing arts, like things that are outside of the classroom, like pep band and so forth. But if, if a kid is in orchestra, they would necessarily not show up as an activity participant, or would they? If it's like during the school day type orchestra or band?
Yeah. Technically, they wouldn't be. They might have responded that, yeah, I'm in performing arts. We sent that out to every single student, grade six through 12. So they made the determination. Am I in this, or am I not in this?
But when we look at our district and we say 62% are in an activity, that may not count all the kids that are in the arts offerings during the day if they're not in another activity?
Potentially.
So that, that would be another, yeah, Rebecca?
Right, because if they, if they take, say, orchestra, choir, or band, and that's during, that's during the day, so that's a class that they would be taking. So another thing that I wanted to just suggest in regard to all of the kids that participate in the, in activities, you know, in other ways that the school district doesn't provide, next time, could we include a question on that? Do you provide, you know, do you participate in an activity outside of the school? And that could be a sports activity or an arts activity or something. It would just be kind of interesting. And we could drill down and say, if yes, what? Or, you know, you could come up with that. But it might be kind of interesting to, to see that and help us, help us track a little bit more, help us get a better idea of how, where, what our kids are doing, how busy they are. And how some of those activities obviously lend to the, how well the kids are doing in school as well. Can we track the GPA? Thank you.
We'll add that.
Just kind of spitting off that or in a very similar vein, one extra question after they say, no, I'm not a participant. Why are you not a participant? Is it time? Is it travel? Is it cost? Is it expense? Is it just lack of interest? I think that would be interesting to know without us having to guess. But otherwise, this is a great report. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much, all of you, for making time to come out this evening. And this is not only fascinating information for us, but what a powerful reflection on the work you all are doing in our school buildings. Thank you so very much. This is great. It's inspiring. Thank you. I think we'll take a short, five-minute break, and then we'll be right back. We're back. I entertain a motion for our consent agenda, please.
So moved.
Second. Motion by Kristy, seconded by Rebecca, to approve the consent agenda items. All in favor, say aye. All opposed, same? Thank you. Monitoring of GP four, five, nine, and 10. You have that in front of you. And once again, Jennifer displays her superpowers by asking questions that never occurred to any of us. But once she asks, it's like, huh! Which none of us have the answer to this. Yeah, that is yours. I love it. I love it. The, Jennifer's comment is that in, in here, it says that we monitor the superintendent three times a year. And in our GPs, we could actually only find, you know, we do the two, and trying to figure out what the third is referring to. So if you have something to add, I think we'll kick this to governance and for some clarity.
Okay. Well, and I don't have the answer, but when Anne Marie and I spoke about it, the only thing we could come up with is perhaps it, it's counting all the ELs. But we don't know.
And if it's that hard to describe, it needs to be fixed. So thank you for flexing that ability of yours. I appreciate it. So we will, we will take this up in governance and clarify it. But otherwise, all of the responses kind of speak for themselves. I would entertain a motion to accept this report.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Rebecca, seconded by John, to accept the monitoring of GP four, five, nine, and 10. All, or, roll call, please.
Roenbaker?
Yes.
Ulrich?
Yes.
Benson?
Yes.
Goldenberg?
Yes.
Knutson?
Yes.
Paulson?
Yes.
Boyd?
Yes. Motion carries. Thank you. We will start on our board and liaison reports with Rebecca, please.
Let's see. Well, mine is going to be short. We have our GAC meeting set, and that is going to be October, well, the first one is going to be October 18th, and at 7:30 a.m. in this room. And that is the third Thursday, I believe. It's a Thursday, right, or is it a Tuesday? I, my notes are not here, so. So it's the third Tuesday of the month for the regular meeting. And that's, I think that's my report. Does that not look right, Linda?
I, I sent in my feedback that I can't meet on, at 7:30 in the morning on first or third. No, no, first or third Thursdays. Yeah, no, it's good. It's good. Sorry. Okay, so we're good. Thank you, and that's all I have. Thanks a lot. Appreciate that. Thank you. Jennifer?
Okay, so let me think here. I don't have my communications notes from the communication meeting as I'm frantically looking for them. I must have forgot them, my share.
Do you want to skip over? Do you want us to come on?
Well, no, it's okay. I don't have them. So unless you all have something that you remember that was, you know, worthy of sharing out, other than our next meeting is October, October, I do have that. October 10th at 12.
You did report on it at the last.
I did. Okay, perfect. Thank you. No wonder why I don't have it. Okay. And then the other couple of things I'll just mention is, I was invited to spend some time over at Washington Elementary, which is my liaison school. And I spent some time learning more about the reading and recovery. And I planned to put it together in, in our little shareout. So you'll have more information about that program. They did ask me if the board would like to see it. They were very eager to, to share their information, and they're very proud of their program, so I will say that. They would welcome any, any of you that want to learn more about it. And then Health Insurance Committee meeting met yesterday. Just a couple of things. They reviewed the premiums and discussed ways that they're going to share out with the staff. And it sounded like there were some tentative dates around HSA education being possibly November 1st and 2nd. So that's it.
Great. Thank you very much. John?
Thank you for being short. Mine's a little longer. I had a busy couple of weeks. Let me pull up my notes here, excuse me. So let's just start, most recently, yesterday was Monday, right? The 26th? I stopped by the I stopped by the grand opening of the Butler House at 7-Eleven University, just north of Agassi Woodrow Wilson Building. It's a project that I believe, if I, my notes are right, was about nine years in the making. It is a permanent supportive housing for homeless youth age 18 to 26. So young adults that may be outside of kind of our purview here, but I think it's a really important resource for our community. It's going to have room now for 21 single adults and four families, predominantly single mothers. It's been a kind of a soft open the past couple of years as they've been trying to finish their funding. $2 million, I believe, all organized by Frazier here in town. And of, in the past two years, the young adults that have been able to take advantage of it, 83% have been able to move into their own homes, having been able to have that kind of transition, permanent place they can live as long as they, they really need. They get their GEDs or they find a job or they just find some kind of a support network with the program staff there that allow them to continue their lives after having spent some time homeless. It's, it's a wonderful addition to our, our city. Absolutely essential. It's going to really, really change lives and give some kids opportunities that after a really, really rough beginning to their life. On the 23rd, Friday, I got to sneak over to Longfellow for their all-school rally. And you maybe saw this in the media, their custodian, one of their custodian staff, Nico Reyes, Reyes, ruining his last name. He, I think it was last year, created a sketchbook of kind of comic characters and one of the first grade teachers found it and he was trying to, looking around, thinking it was a student that had created it, found out it was Nico, and used it as a springboard to writing prompts and kind of just these creative, creative assignments. And they, the students have created this whole universe now surrounding this superhero called Lionfellow and his allies, his nemeses, all the adventures they've gone on. And he surprised the students over the summer by spending some of his own time painting a mural of a life-size Lionfellow in their hallway. Really exciting. And part of, I mean, that, that's really cool. And what I really enjoyed seeing was, it was part of their kind of all-school kickoff of the year rally in their gymnasium. And we talked about school culture. Oh, my gosh! It was just, that gym was exploding with it. Every single kid was excited about this Lionfellow. At the end of the whole thing, they all sang their school song, which was, blew the roof off the place and just the excitement and the pride of those kids being a Longfellow lion just was great. Just a great, great day. On the 19th, I attended the FPS alumni fall get-together, which also doubled as a showcase for some of the stuff that our Development Foundation has been doing. And just going to run on this list really quickly because it's really, really cool stuff. We are so lucky to have this foundation that's able to do this funding for these kind of special projects that are really making an extra bit of difference in our community. Jerry Hansen and Mary Dollzall from Kennedy were there with their 3D doodler pen. It's kind of like a 3D printer, but it's all hand-controlled and they've been exploring kind of 3D art, some kind of non-traditional materials art. And, and it's kind of a precursor to them looking at, oh, this is cool. What can we do with maybe a 3D printer or other different kind of materials? That was purchased with funds from the foundation. Ariel Dowling, Brittany Olson, and who else was it? Jason Smithmire from South were there. Kind of combining their homework help program where they get kids in after school and, and help them with homework and then the South Bruin Food Pantry. And so there's food for them when they're studying at that kind of homework thing. Again, that's foundation funds. Darlene Boyle with the Indian Education Program and their summer reading program. They're able to buy a bunch of books, get kids together and reading throughout the summer. Also in talking to her, exciting news, they got some more Title I funding this year and so they've gone from one full-time employee to three full-time employees. And now there are Native American clubs being formed in all of our schools. They're planning more activities. And I lost my note, but I believe there is like, I think it's going to be October 10th. They brought in Native American artists at the theater in Island Park there. They're going to bring a bunch of kids over to. Jan Anderson demonstrating what we're doing with our homeless program. So kind of, you know, talking about that, the Butler House and the need for that. Last year, Jan assisted 271 homeless youth in our community, students, student-aged. 271. Heartbreaking, some of the stories that she was telling me. But so, so encouraging that we have her as a resource. She's an incredible person. Another story, Leah, and I can never pronounce her name right, Leah Jewelkey at South? What's that? Is that right? Pretty close? She, she does the Journey to America Narrative Short Stories Project where she takes new Americans and has them write their stories as part of their right, creative writing process. I think there's some that we keep upstairs in the lobby and kind of the waiting area. So the Development Foundation funds help with the binding costs of that. An awesome story from this project. She was contacted by somebody who does something very similar down in the Twin Cities, taking those stories, collecting them. They found the funding to professionally bind these, professionally have them edited, and have a corresponding teacher's guidebook published with them. And it's a nationwide curriculum for teaching about being able, teaching about new American stories and be able to write about your own story. She has opportunity now. She is going to have handpicked 30 of her students to do the exact same thing from Fargo Public Schools. Find 30 of these stories, have them professionally edited, professionally bound, have a teacher's guide with them. It's going to be a national curriculum. Astounding. What else? Really cool. The Don Bolstad and Renee Schwant from North were able to take some of these special ed kids down to the zoo. Wonderful stories from that, wonderful pictures, wonderful activities and an opportunity that they otherwise probably wouldn't have had. Bambi Lambert at South took a lot of our, our deaf students to a kind of conference called Deaf Nation down in the Twin Cities and turned it into this amazing real-life, you talk, when you talk about project-based learning and real-life 21st century skills, they had to budget the trip. They had to figure out how to order their meals on this trip. They got to go to the Mall of America and figure out the food court and the, all the rides and everything. They went to a hotel. They had to be able to figure out how to check in on their own and they demonstrated how to take advantage of the features of accessible hotel rooms. Another really great trip that funded by the Development Foundation. Of course Kathy Anderson and Kelsey Hewitt were there with Trollwood and hosting. And then Matthew Hallquist and Thomas Weber from Ben Franklin were showing off the amazing downtown Fargo past and present project that they did with their kids where there's a podcast for going around downtown and they're looking forward to getting some more development funds and looking at their next class to work with different business owners and building owners downtown to highlight that a little bit more and the availability and get little QR codes up that you can scan. And so wonderful event, wonderful event. And our Development Foundation is just fantastic. And then, not to steal too much of Kristi's thunder, but on the 15th, I was able to get over to the CBH Ice Cream Social. And that every day were as easy as giving ice cream to little kids. Thank you for your patience.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Good stuff. Kristi.
I was at the Development Foundation Open House. I won't reiterate what John has said and I was scooping ice cream with the mosquitoes at Carl Ben, or not Carl Ben, Claire Barton. And then last week, I was also at the Chamber Annual Meeting.
Wonderful. Thank you very much. David.
I attended the PTA at the Eagles. They had 27 people there. It's the biggest PTA meeting I've ever gone to in the time I've been on the board. I think they said they've signed up 70 members, which I think is pretty cool for a brand-new school. They, they were fired up. I, other than that, I've set up meetings with Davies and the Eagles for my visitations, waiting to hear from the Bennett principal. That's about it.
Great. Thank you very much. Dinah.
I've met with Brad Larson to discuss my visit to CBE and I'll be doing that in October. There was a Board of Health meeting. Nothing earth-shattering there. Was it the Lincoln Walk-a-thon that turned into a dance-a-thon because of the man, the weather? I did a You're Hired at CBE. All the middle schools across the district are doing this, so I'm sure you guys will, if you're a middle school liaison or they're sending them to all the boards, anyway, it was loads of fun. And I went to my first city PTA meeting as their liaison and Dr. Schatz gave a very good first message about the Mill Levy and explained a lot of really good stuff. And there were quite a few really good questions from the audience, so I think that they'll be a, a good support team. Oh, and they did say that their executive board is going to support, come out in support of the Mill Levy vote, so.
Great. Thank you, Dinah.
I've passed out my president's report. We just got done with Symphony Concert Week that was action-packed, so I did nothing school-related. But I would like to bring your attention to NS, NDSBA meeting coming up. So Anne Marie has given us a grid of who's going to be there when. And it always bums me out that I can't join everybody for dinner because the fourth Thursday of the month is my own board meeting. And they would miss me, I think, if I weren't there. Somebody would notice. So, but we'll all be there for the convention? Thanks so much. Does this mean you're not going? What's the big gray block?
Actually, I'll be in Washington, DC at Georgetown University, attending that week-long community forum, not a forum, session on restorative justice and looking at the overall disproportionate numbers that are occurring in the juvenile court system and in overall suspensions, expulsions. It's something I informed you about before. Chief Todd, myself, the Director of Juvenile Court, one of the juvenile prosecutors, Jill Freeze from Restorative Justice, and I think there's one other person, yeah, Youth Works, Height Camp from Youth Works. We're going, as a matter of fact, we meet tomorrow for two hours as a team to start talking about what our game plan is, the ideas that we come back. And this is not just a school thing, it's a community thing, it's a Cass County thing. Being funded by the federal government through funds that were given to the state, so Burley County and Cass County are both sending a team. You had to be selected to go. And they were quite impressed that both the Chief of Police and Superintendent, both were willing to be part of this and spend a whole week doing that. So I will be flying out Sunday and I have homework. They start on Monday morning and I leave, I think, 3:00 on Friday.
Wow.
So it's quite intensive.
Is there any sort of press release going out? I mean, I think the fact that this, that you're doing this is fantastic. Another piece of big, important, good news.
When I meet with the group tomorrow, I'll find out if, because Karen Kringle has been kind of organizing this from Juvenile Court.
Okay.
And I'll find out if she's planning to do something like that because it's more than just schools again. It's a
Right.
whole team and she's heading it up. So I will not be in Bismarck attending your convention.
Try not to look so gleeful when you say that. Oh, man. John.
One thing I forgot, since Jim's not here, I think our planning committee meeting is Friday, the 7th.
Yes.
At 7:30 here.
Yes, I believe that's true. Dinah.
I was just going to say if there is a press release or, you know, that they're doing, it might be nice to put it in our e-newsletters, you know, in the school talk, you know, because it, it would be a good, as Linda said, a nice PR piece that our, our families see, our mailing list.
That's great. I did attend the City Commission meeting last night. They were doing their Mill Levy hearing and passing their final budget and I was part of a big arts contingent and that went well. But I was able to personally speak kind of in-your-face style to every single commissioner and they're all coming tomorrow, so I'm very happy about that. So we'll have five out of five from the City Commission and I hear, didn't Anne Marie said all the park board people except, with the exception of one?
Just one park board member won't be able to make it. Yep.
Fantastic. So I'm looking forward to tomorrow. So we'll be there nice and early so that people that arrive for tours will, will be on hand and thank you for making time for that. Our next meeting is October 11th. Does anyone have anything else? Rebecca.
So for tomorrow night, what, as far as board members, is it those of us that are here tonight that are also going to be there tomorrow? Because Jim's gone, right?
Right. I think everyone had mentioned that they're, no? You're not going to be there. Everybody else? Okay? Good. And I think, oh, and Dr. Schatz.
I want to play role of John Stran tonight.
Okay.
And birthdays? It's Anne Marie's birthday today, so she is, she's spent her, so her children and husband are waiting for her to get home, so you can hit the gavel anytime now.
We're adjourned.